Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on May 13th, 2022. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Servicing Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, June 6th, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Please note that the board meetings in June, July, and August will begin at 6:00 PM. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
Both of which are stated at the top of your agenda. The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Vice President. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Head. Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Present.
Tealyn.
Here.
Ate present.
And I did hear from Mr. Head noting that he would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Head's absence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Case been moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Vice President Erdnberger. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Ate aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to school spotlight, Mr. Maskell.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight reflects our portrait of an Omaha Public Schools graduate, in that the young people we celebrate tonight are prepared to be communicators, civic and global contributors, and more. We are honoring students who earned their seal of bilinguism as they prepare to graduate. And to further explain, I'll introduce our World Languages Supervisor, Maria Perez-Mozas.
Good evening. It wasn't too long that I was here for something similar, but today's even better because we're going to celebrate some of our students that got awarded with the Nebraska Seal of Bilinguism. As you know, multilingualism is seen as an asset when you're applying for a job or for college. The Nebraska Seal of Bilinguism now admits in some of our colleges like UNO, UNK, Don University, they get college credits by having the Nebraska Seal of Bilinguism. And it is also nationally recognized. And just so you know, this is not an easy task. This is not something that they get in one year. They have to work hard during at least three years to be able to get the Nebraska Seal. They have to show proficiency in English and in another language. Also, I want to highlight our teachers. I have some teachers here that have been supporting our students to apply for it, but also to get to this achievement. So now, with no further ado, we're going to highlight some of them. And I forgot to tell you, this May, 70 of our OPS students were awarded with the Nebraska Seal of Bilinguism. And in the past year and a half, it has been about almost 100 students that got it. So I am going to let them introduce themselves with the school and something they want to share.
Hi, my name is Arlene Reyes. I'm a senior at South High. My mom put me in the dual language program since kindergarten.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Pacheco. I'm from Bryan High School. And I've been in the dual language program since middle school.
Hello, my name is Jimena Morales, and I am a senior from Bryan High School. It is an honor to represent the Bryan and multilingual community in receiving the Nebraska Seal of Bilinguism. While this seal will help open more doors and build more bridges for me, it also symbolizes the opportunity I received to take Spanish and French at Omaha Bryan. Throughout my four years, I learned that language is more than just strengthening one's linguistic skills. It is about building connections in a new world of people who speak the same language. And it is about discovering the culture the language belongs in and diving beneath the cultural iceberg to know its deep culture. As a multilingual Latina, language has become a powerful tool to utilize in my community, in my everyday life, and in my future. Thank you.
I'm Lucia Reboyo, and I go to Omaha South, and I'm a senior. And I joined the dual language program in first grade, and I learned that language is a big asset. And through that, at South, I was able to be in the interpreting cohort so that when I graduate, I will have a certificate in interpreting.
Hello, my name is Malise Bonner. I'm a senior at Omaha South. And for me, this experience was a little bit different because at home, we only speak English. So going into the dual language program in kindergarten, it was a really eye-opening experience for me. And I truly believe that I would not be going into the path that I've chosen without this program. And so, yeah, I could not be more grateful for this experience. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justelle Kornar, and I go to Central. And I am honored to receive the Seal of Bilinguism because being bilingual will help me help other people who haven't had the opportunity to be able to learn the English language. It would just make, it would just help, like, let me help them make their life easier. For example, in my career, I wanted to be a teacher. And being able to be bilingual, it will help me be able to communicate better with students' parents. And that will help them just feel a little bit more connected to their students' education.
Hi, my name is Gustavo Angiano, and I'm a senior at Omaha South. And the reason I'm honored to get this award is because being both doing dual role in English and Spanish really helped me improve my Spanish speaking skills and helped me out choose my career in the future and help others when they are having language barriers.
Hello, I am Jose Gonzalez-Hilario. I am a senior at South. And I have been in the dual language program since sixth grade. And it's an incredible thing because since the sixth grade, my grades have gone up and raised since I've been in the program. Thank you.
That's all of them. I mean, there are more in OPS, but this is a representation. You may have some questions?
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I think we appreciate you all being here. Congratulations to you all. We are also very OPS proud of each and every single one of you. Questions, colleagues? Mr. Snow?
I don't have many questions, but I want to congratulate you all for your Seal of Bilinguism. I do have a couple of questions. So the first one to the mic, that is interested in being a teacher, what can you say about how OPS has impacted you and how you can be that connection between the parent and the district when it comes to language?
Well, being in OPS, it has helped me be able to take many, well, Spanish as a language. And that will really help me because it really improved my language skills. I was able to speak Spanish, but I wasn't really strong in reading it or writing it. But through taking Spanish classes at Central, I have been able to improve on that skills. And being a teacher, I'll be able to be able to communicate more with the students' parents, either by speaking with them, writing some letters to them, writing emails with them. So that will really help my communication with parents and them feeling connected to their child's education.
Thank you. And I'm sure you can use that in the community when people need help as well. Thank you so much. I have one more question. How many students are Bryan students? Raise your hand. Two? How many are South students? So this is, in my opinion, amazing, in Central, sorry, amazing because you have three very distinct, different schools and how this spreads across the district. I one day hope we can get this in every school and get it be a dual language district across, because we know it helps a lot of students from different nationalities. I was just talking to Vice President Erdnberger about African-American men that participate in dual language, how it helps their grades overall. As a person from Texas, I wish I participated in a program like this. So thank you so much for making us OPS proud. And Maria, congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to add that we do have our Ds from all high schools. So Benson, Northwest, Burke, all high schools. This is just as a small representation from the May award turnaround.
If you had a crystal ball and a wish, whatever, about the program, what would you want?
So to get this seal, yeah, to get this seal, you don't need to be only in dual language. You actually can be awarded, in fact, some of them may not be in, may have not been in dual language. We have many students that get the Nebraska Seal just by taking World Languages classes and taking an AP Language Test. In fact, last year, we had a student that got two seals, one for Chinese and another one for French. So imagine that student is leaving OPS with three languages, which I think is amazing.
I think it's amazing, but the question is, if you had one thing that you wanted from the board and the district, what would it be? How can we help you expand this program? Don't be nervous.
You know, something that you are going to do, I think, that is going to help expand this program is the approval of the World Languages resources today. So that's really going to help our program.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Ms. Cassidy?
Just very quickly, I know that you mentioned we have some instructors here. I know I see one right here in the front. Can the instructors stand up and be recognized? I know Ms. Espinoz is right there.
Thank you for being here and for all that you do.
All right. If there are no other questions, we would invite students to come up to give us a fist bump, elbow bump, and receive a OPS Proud pin.
Madam President, this is amazing seeing our success of our students because there's so much negativity in the world. And seeing this just shows how much our school district's amazing.
Oh, we're doing pictures now? All right. Okay, can we make two rows? Okay, everybody look this way. One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Going to give a couple of seconds for our guests to leave. Thank you. Okay, moving on now to board and superintendent communications. Dr. Logan.
Buenas noches, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, miembros del conjunto de educación, los que asisten aquí y los que están mirando de la casa. Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, those here in attendance and watching from home. Felicidades a los que ganaron la aprobación de aprobación bilingüe. And congratulations to those who earned the Seal of Bilinguism. Beginning with tonight's agenda, pending board approval, we are thrilled to accept the certificate of substantial completion for Buena Vista and Westview High Schools. Our four new schools will welcome students this summer and fall. We are going to have summer school in our high schools this summer while there is work being done at South and at North. We look forward to opening celebrations at Buena Vista, Westview Pine Elementary, and Forest Station Elementary this summer. The opening celebration for Buena Vista is June 2nd, and for Westview, it is June 7th. Proactive work and our commitment to open communication means that impacted families have received information about student assignment plan changes since 2019. District staff sent thousands of letters, emails, and even made individual phone calls to ensure our families are prepared. I shared this at a previous meeting, but it is worth repeating. By investing tens of millions of dollars in small and emerging businesses, we elevate the community impact of these bond programs. More than two dozen schools are benefiting from the bond program right now. We do have a bond presentation this evening. Also on tonight's agenda, for our board's consideration, are academic resources for schools throughout our district. Maria mentioned those a little while ago. Looking to academics, I want to highlight students are registered for, 13,000 students are registered for Next Level Learning, our summer program in June and July. That is a lot of students. Next Level Learning is part of our media and long-term work to address academic needs from three disrupted school years. 13,000 students is fantastic on its own, and we thank the many employees who make it possible. But when you think about the unique and extraordinary impact of our school district, 13,000 students would be one of Nebraska's larger school district on a normal school day in September. Actually, I think it would make it fourth. Yes, fourth. That is what Omaha Public Schools will offer this summer. It's wonderful and unique to OPS. At our April 21st Board of Education workshop, we provided a staffing update as we conclude this school year and look to the next. That evening, we shared the number of staff transitions had already exceeded the previous school year's total. There is no doubt, the last three years brought more demands in the classroom and in offices than ever before. And it did not stop at the end of the day. Everyone confronted challenges outside of school brought on by the pandemic. At our last board meeting, we said, "There is no thank you grand enough for the people who make our system go." We've also made changes where we can, adding non-student days both this year and next. Omaha Public Schools is the first district to make those calendar updates for teachers. OPS offered professional development to address the strain faced by teachers. Our concierge team is unique to Omaha Public Schools. I believe there are a little over 70 folks. And bringing in more qualified community members to help with office and lunchtime tasks. Human Resources posted part-time teaching positions for certain roles within our schools. I believe those were posted last week or week before last. Staff are contacting teachers who resign and who are not under contract with another school district to discuss options for the next school year. I know that three people have already rescinded their resignation. We are recruiting and hiring locally and nationally. Our Teacher Administrative Center team supports lunch service or teaching and learning weekly. The number of student teachers joining our district will double this fall. We were the first school district locally to offer a student-teacher stipend. Our parent-teacher, teacher academy, and Next Level Learning interns are all part of a comprehensive staff pipeline unique to our district. This is a shortage and a headwind faced by every school district, urban and rural in Nebraska and across our country. But it's more important right here at home. It is a challenge faced in every field from education to healthcare, sadly. At our workshop on the 21st, I took a moment to ensure we acknowledge the lived reality of our staff, that while we are leading nationally in developing future talent, it does not fill every position tomorrow. It does not immediately lighten the lift of our current and immediate future staff. We will rise to meet the challenge and the need together. We are counting on the Omaha community to join this effort and rally alongside us as we deliver high-quality, in-person learning next year. We care deeply about our staff and our students. We are committed to our strategic plan, our mission, and our vision for the students of Omaha. Moving on to commencement, our graduating students have a lot to celebrate. Graduation start on Friday with J.P. Lord, the first graduation, at 1:00 PM this Friday. Graduation ceremonies will continue next week for our comprehensive high schools on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. You can find dates, times, and live stream links on OPS.org under District Announcements. It's important to note that all of our graduations at Baxter Arena are livestreamed. Each year, we get to spend May celebrating our young people at many different ceremonies, and we have the best in OPS. Recently, we held our Top Senior Breakfast, where honorees spoke about their experience in our district. It was deeply moving. One senior spoke about their earliest years learning English and how Omaha Public Schools laid the foundation for her plans to pursue a medical degree. OPS's virtual schools offered an all-star gymnast the flexibility she needed to excel academically and athletically. One student arrived in our district with so many credits to earn, the finish line seemed impossible far off. But his resiliency and our staff's support mean college is ahead this fall. As a matter of fact, that is a gateway to college student. These are just a few examples of exceptional children throughout the Omaha Public Schools. We know our students achieve success and excellence in many ways every day of the year, as well as our staff. Speaking of achievements, congratulations are in order for the Omaha Public Schools teachers named Cox Education Heroes, the 44 students named to Academic All-State by the NSA, Katie Rice of King Science Middle for earning the Leadership Development Award from the National Council of Teachers of English, Sarah Cohen of Central High for receiving the Country Music Association's 2022 Music Teachers of Excellence Award. That's a big deal because they normally, it's mostly teachers in Nashville, and they pick a few teachers from outside of Nashville. Cameron Verona of Morris Middle for acceptance into the Honors Performance Series. She will play at New York's Carnegie Hall this summer. She's a piano player. Stephanie Hazing, named Nebraska Social Worker of the Year by the School Social Work Association of Nebraska. And finally, to the Bears of Bryan High, who made a record run at the Nebraska State Boys Soccer Tournament, reaching the semifinals for the first time in school history. Vamos juntos los osos. Thank you. This concludes my remarks for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Logan, and congratulations to all of our students and teachers that Dr. Logan spoke about this evening. I also wanted to take a brief moment to share some words tonight. You know, I know that things have been tough. And I'd just like to say on behalf of our board, I want to stress how seriously we take this work. In 2020, our strategic plan of action outlined the importance of recruiting and retaining top talent. And since then... And since then, the pandemic has, of course, accelerated the need and our work. As Dr. Logan mentioned, the Omaha Public Schools is leading the way, and our staffing pipeline does not exactly, right now, remove every obstacle today. But it is moving us forward through the community and through nationwide challenges that we are all experiencing. Beyond the Strategic Plan of Action, I know that our Board is investing in our staff and our students in many different ways. Something that I'm doing right now, as a former teacher for the Omaha Public Schools, I'm also in the buildings and subbing when I can and have enjoyed all of my experiences thus far. Many of us are parents on this Board of Students in our school district and are in our buildings many, many times, participating in activities, school event nights, conferences, just getting in when we can to help support our school buildings. I know that Vice President Erdnberger has gone in and helped during lunchtime. I know that Ms. Crackey has been in. And I know all of us have been, excuse me, doing our part as much as we can to help and assist the best ways that we can. I know that every single Board member at this table, including Mr. Head, who was absent today, we are certainly united in our care and for our students, for our staff, for our parents and our communities, and the commitment to all of you. And we certainly do realize that although we cannot fix and correct everything right now, we are certainly doing our best and trying to figure out what we can do to assist and to keep you all encouraged. And just know that we do care and that we do understand and that we do hear you all. Ms. Crackey.
You just did a good summary of what we were all wanting to say to all the teachers out there and the staff and the parents. They're equally involved. They take them to school, some are lunch aids and pares and different things. So we appreciate everybody out there. This week, I was having lunch with the people who we call the Bell Group. It had some other words in front of it, but we've shortened it to the Bell Group. And it's former teachers in the district. And they asked me questions, and I don't think we can always answer all the questions because things change. So in view of that, I talked with Matt today, and we put together, "What is at the TAC building?" Because we don't always know every floor and what's involved here, because it changes, and it has changed. And that's the teachers too. They didn't know what was here. So first of all, how many people are here? And the judgment is about three fifty to four hundred. And they are not just sitting here in the building. Some of them are home, this is their home base, but then they leave the building and go out into the schools and into the community. Things we have here are, on the first floor, the Career Center. Students are bused from their schools to the TAC building and back for approximately an hour and a half of their day. We have an auto shop there where they fix cars, and I have been told it was really, really excellent. Pre-nurse program, and then they go forward after graduation. We have a broadcast studio, which many of you hear, NPR, and that is from our studio downstairs. And we also can film interviews down there too. The virtual school is on this first floor, and welding is something that they participate in. And that might be a skill that, how many times are you at home where you sure wish you could put that together? And so I give it to somebody else to do. The second floor is our Board offices, HR, the Superintendent's Office, Accounting and Finance, Research. The auditorium, right now, is having updates to the rigging of it, of the mechanism. The third floor is the Consoling Offices, Due Process, Early Head Start. Student records are also housed. Some here, but a lot of them are housed in another building for safety's sake. You hear about fires in buildings and how everything burns up and it's all gone. We have secured ours, so that will not happen. And we also have Student Community Services on that floor. The fourth floor is the Virtual School, MTC, the ESU, and there's a library up there. Help Desk, Budget Finance, Title I, and ESL Offices. And I hadn't gone up into that much as a teacher, but there are things available for teachers on that floor. And also, they can order them and have them sent out to their building. We are the only one that has our own ESU, and that's because we are so large that this is the reason we are alone with that. And the fifth floor is where our curriculum purchases are, and they no longer have Satellite Kitchen or the area for Board Members Lunch, which in, we could say, olden days, we, as a Board, would go eat our lunch upstairs and go through the cafeteria line and then come back for our afternoon meeting. And from my viewpoint, I think it's very much, sorry, that we are not doing that. That gave us the opportunity to know each other as people on the Board just a little bit better and know a little bit more about them. We didn't talk school, because you don't talk school where there's too many of you in a room, or it's just not something you do. And very occasionally, with workshops on the Board, we have outside lunches brought in at the district expense, which probably is about four, five, six dollars per Board Member, and that happens maybe once or twice a year. I always think it's a good thing, though, for us to have the opportunity to be together. I say that all the time. And so I hope that you Board Members, maybe I wasn't as good as Jane did, because she does a really good job with all her updates to us every week. But I hope that this helped inform everybody out there a little bit better.
Well said, Ms. Crackey. Thank you. Vice President Erdnberger.
Okay, he set the bar for me, Nancy. A couple of things. One, speaking of what we have here in the TAC building, and I'll go over this again at some other point, but I did take a tour of the virtual school a couple of weeks ago, and that is amazing. It's a whole kindergarten through high school here in the building. And what they are accomplishing is amazing. But before we get there, speaking of buildings, as Dr. Logan mentioned, we have our two new high schools. Tonight, later on the agenda, we will be accepting the certificate of completion, which is a pretty big deal. And there will be opening ceremonies, June 2nd at Buena Vista and June 7th at Westview. And I am assured that, by Mr. Wakefield, that if you attend those meetings, if you're willing to stand in line long enough, there will be guided tours of those high schools at that time. So any of our thousands of listeners, if you're interested in attending those openings, they will include a guided tour. The other thing I was going to mention was items, what are they here? Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, I think, they all have to do with what's going on this summer as our Next Level Learning. And they range from enrichment camps for elementary students at Gifford Park Elementary and Liberty Elementary to a contract with the Lego brand retail. We will be getting Lego Education STEM Packs, Creative Lego Duplo Brick Sets, Lego Education Products Training, a Lego Education Brick Q Motion Essential Set, just a whole bunch of really cool things for kids to work on this summer. The point of our Next Level Learning is not merely to bring kids up to where they might not otherwise be because of the time-loss learning, but to also just inspire the joy of learning and the creative way of going about learning information. And those are three of the things that we are presumably going to approve in a couple of minutes here, and will make for a fascinating and creative summer school program. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Erdnberger. Mr. Snow.
Already up. Vice President Erdnberger, when she was speaking, struck something in my mind. If we go back to 2018, the Cinco de Mayo Parade, Mr. Smith, Dr. Holman, Tracy, we all had the OPS Proud Shirts in the hot sun, letting people know to vote on that. And I remember at the Sixtieth and L School, breaking that ground, Mr. Smith and Dr. Holman. And I just want to thank everybody for participating in that, in the community that voted overwhelmingly, sixty-seven percent, to support that. We love you, we thank you, and these buildings are going to help our students. They're going to help with overcrowding, and they're going to allow our students to reach that next level, because we want to take our district from good to great. Also want to thank the YMCA, especially at Westview, it was raining that day, and there was a lot of mud. So thank you all, Samson and McCarthy, for really working with our district. And if you think about it, two high schools, there's no district in the state that was building two high schools at the same time. That's a lot to juggle. Mr. Roberts knows that. So thank you so much, Omaha, and from the bottom of my heart, I'm very proud and grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Juarez.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I went to the South High Finale Program yesterday that featured the chamber singers and the Ambassador Show Choir. And it was a sixtieth anniversary celebration of the Ambassador Show Choir at South. And the program was fantastic. I had to keep reminding myself that these actually were just high school students singing. They were just amazing, just amazing. And the other thing I attended was the Latino Family Night at Bryan, where they gave a tour to the families that night to explain to them about the academies. And so I appreciated all their efforts. And of course, I want to thank all of the students and the staff for the great performance yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on now to public comment. Tonight, we have eight speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student nor staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak tonight and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB-83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify him or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. The following individuals have requested that the Board waive the requirement, that they state their address at the podium for security reasons. And tonight, we have two individuals. The first is Michaela Kazer, and the second is Adam Byers. I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement that those named individuals state their address at the podium.
I'd move to waive the requirement for Mr. Byers.
What's the reason? Did he list? No.
I second the motion that was with respect to Mr. Byers. Is that right? I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Sorry.
Yes, you're Snow.
Why?
I won't read it aloud, but I will pass the form out to you.
I appreciate it.
Vice President Erdnberger.
Yeah, I would just note that I think all of the Board members have had a chance to read the reasoning on his form. So further discussion may not be necessary.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Teeland to waive the reading of the address of Mr. Byers, and there's a second by Vice President Erdnberger. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Teeland.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to waive the requirement for Michaela Kazer? Okay. We ask that all other individuals, please state and spell your first name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. Those individuals covered by the previous motion need not provide their address. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the Board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them for you. It is now seven ten p.m., and our first speaker of the night is Michelle Suttermeyer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Michelle Suttermeyer, 19694 Concord Loop, Council of Iowa, 51503. S-E-T-T-L-E-M-Y-E-R, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E. Good evening. I'm addressing the Board as a twenty-three-year veteran, teacher, current Board Member, and president-elect of the Omaha Education Association. I stand before you as one teacher representing many that have not felt valued or appreciated for over the last several years. We have consistently come to the district and the Board with very viable solutions to issues facing Omaha Public Schools. Many of those issues, or many of those solutions typically require little to no monetary investment, but could yield very high returns based on proper implementation. The local media outlets have reported that as many as seven hundred teachers are either leaving for other districts, work in the private sector, or retiring. Has the district really considered why the great resignation is happening? As a representative of OPS teachers, I will provide you some insight as to why. One, staff coverages due to not being fully staffed. When teachers are constantly covering classes on a regular basis, it is draining, both mentally and physically. The number of teachers covering classes has now increased as a result of the substitute teacher shortage. More teachers are taking time off to heal. As a result, more teachers are covering. You were informed of fifty-three staff members covering for eleven absent teachers one day in January. One day, two weeks ago at a high school, sixty-three staff members had to cover for fourteen individuals that were out without substitutes. That does not include the occasional blocks where resource rooms remain unopened due to not having the necessary staff to cover. When teachers have to cover for their peers at any grade level, learning and success suffers. Two, safety. Students and staff have continually expressed to leadership that they do not feel safe. When staff and students on a regular basis are threatened with harm, either in jest or with sincerity, we ought to react with transparency. When we are understaffed in terms of security and staff, we are unable to protect ourselves and our students. The number of conflicts and the level of violence within the buildings over the last years has increased dramatically due to not having the proper staff. Those include teachers, pares, security, et cetera. The students-to-adult ratio is not in balance. Please, I implore you, listen to security guards and show that you value them at the table. We need strong, valued security guards as parts of our community schools and culture. Three, value. The district has repeatedly said that it values the amazing work of its teachers as it has persevered through many challenges over the last years. We do not feel valued, appreciated, or otherwise. We are tired. We feel used. We are worn out due to the unreasonable demands, workload, and loss of time in situations beyond our control, but well within yours. When I addressed the Board for semester, I expressed the concern of teachers leaving at the end of December. It happened. I also feared that there would be more leaving at the end of second semester. That fear, I believe, has come true. Again, have you, as leaders of this district, really looked at the root cause of why teachers are leaving? Or are you chalking it up to the pandemic and, oh, well, we have to do better? There have been surveys upon surveys by the district regarding various topics. I don't recall one, however, requesting specific information on what teachers really need and want. One open-ended question at the end of a survey is not measurable data you can share with your Board. Yet we, however, we have done surveys and have pages and pages upon what teachers feel necessary to feel valued and appreciated, and it does not include a cookie. In closing, we teachers are problems, in closing, we teachers are problem solvers. solvers, passionate about teaching, and highly educated. We can and do find joy in teaching and children, yet are intelligent and caring enough to voice concerns and critique at the very same time, because, teachers, we are experts at multitasking. The BOE does not need to worry about us finding joy, but worry about finding teachers and creating better teaching and learning conditions. The success of Omaha Public Schools
Thirty seconds.
depends on the strength of its staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Byers.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Adam Byers, A-D-A-M-B-Y-E-R-S. I'm speaking today because I believe it is important that this board know why I am resigning my position with Omaha Public Schools. I entered this school year with a burning passion for teaching and an unwavering belief that I can help shape children's lives. I've had the privilege to connect deeply with my students and make this year full of valuable learning, but I accomplished this in spite of building and district administration, not in conjunction. I was made to feel as though my students' success was my responsibility alone. I did not have a fraction of the support I should have had. I did not even have a para. Every day, I was forced to stretch myself beyond my limits to help my students. The burden of being dropped into the deep end without the needed assistance and support and told to swim has completely and utterly destroyed the deep passion I've had for teaching since I was a child. To restate this, a single school year in this environment has destroyed the twenty-year-long love I held for teaching. The disgraceful lack of training I received at the beginning of the school year was a primary cause of this untenable situation. I was given no training on how to de-escalate a four-year-old so unregulated that he throws chairs and tips over shelves full of toys. I was never trained how to respond when a child bites me so hard it leaves a mark. I was provided no training on how to react to a child repeatedly kicking and punching me. I was never taught how to calm a three-year-old screaming and crying during naptime because he is so overtired from being woken at two-thirty A.M. every morning so his mother can go to work. I was never even trained how to take attendance. We did, however, spend days on how we should organize our classroom. I was forced to quickly learn how to handle a classroom full of children who have high knees and disruptive behaviors by myself, all while completing both my normal classroom duties and the duties of a para. The few times I attempted to ask for help resulted in the administration making empty promises or questioning my abilities as a teacher rather than offering guidance or assistance. Time and time again, this district has shown that they do not care about me, their other employees, or any of their students. On a daily basis, I experience apathy at best from my principal, if not a strong feeling of disdain and disinterest. I could not tell you five things that my principal knows about me because she has not even attempted to build rapport with her staff. I can count on one hand the times I received any positive feedback from her this entire year. As a preschool teacher, I'm guaranteed only one single day of planning a month, yet I am berated by building administration for not going above and beyond the curriculum. I do not understand why I am blamed for teaching lessons as written by the district. I do not understand why the district write planning guides that don't align with their requirements of graduate release, or why it is my responsibility to rewrite them myself when I have not been given sufficient time to do so. I do not understand why the burden of responsibility falls on classroom educators and why we shoulder the blame for student behavior. I do not understand why the district continues to blame the pandemic for increased student behavior while simultaneously acting as though the pandemic is over by removing mask mandates and refusing to provide guaranteed paid COVID leave to employees. I do not understand why the district has the audacity to wonder why it is hemorrhaging staff faster than it can beg people to apply, when the district does not value employee feedback, refuses to listen to the feedback the union has collected, pays staff wages inconsistent with the time and effort we are putting into our jobs and packs our classrooms full of extra students on a daily basis. I did not understand why the district would do nothing after receiving multiple reports of my principal violating rules and failing to act in the best interest of her students and staff, until I read the anonymous resignation letter detailing the corruption in the district permeating every level of leadership, beginning right at the very top. I have never experienced such a toxic work environment in my life. I did not expect I would need to use all my paid sick leave because my job destroyed my physical and mental health. This is not due to any lack of strength on my part. I am a strong and resilient man. However, I cannot continue sacrificing my mental and physical health for an employer that will not provide the training and support necessary to assist educators in our mission to help students learn,
One minute.
and prosper. If it should truly be all about the kids, as a board member claims, then perhaps the district should stop spinning wheels to come up with more creative ways to improve the situation and make the changes staff members and the union have repeatedly called for, namely, a living wage for all staff members, guaranteed paid COVID leave, and smaller class sizes. I'm here today because it is about the kids for me and my fellow teachers. Please prove to us that it is the case for you by supporting the people who teach them. Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Robert McKinnis. Good evening.
Good evening. Robert McKinnis, R-O-B-E-R-T-M-C-K-I-N-N-I-S, eight-two-one-nine-North, one-hundred-and-twenty-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-four-two. Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. I am here today to speak on behalf of McKinnis Riffing and Sheet Metal in regard to the upcoming twenty-two, twenty-three re-riff projects for Central High School, Wilson Focus Elementary, McMillan Middle School, Minnylusa Elementary, bid number twenty-two zero seven-five. I want to start by extending my gratitude for affording me the time to speak with you this evening, as well as opportunities, both past and present, to bid on projects for Omaha Public Schools. As was just presented, McKinnis had the lowest bid on the project by approximately a hundred thousand dollars. However, Mr. Neal recommended that the board approve the next highest bid because McKinnis did not indicate that it had all the material on the hand, despite the fact that McKinnis clarified their reasoning for marking no in the box during the bid opening process. Mr. Neal was professional and let us know ahead of time, so I am prepared to discuss the exact reasons that McKinnis indicated that it did not have all the materials on hand. Central High School, this project requires pre-finished metal around the perimeter. The specifications indicate that the color is to match the existing painted metal. In practice, it is impossible to perfectly match the new colors with old for several reasons, including the paint fading over time, discontinued paint colors. Our practice and industry practice is to follow a submittal process to provide the owner with samples, so the owner can select the closest match. We did not believe it was appropriate to represent to OPS that we had the correct color in stock when the color had not been selected. We have clarified this with John Neal during the bidding process. I have also confirmed with our supplier that the pre-finished metal for the job is available within one to two weeks. Mr. Neal has indicated that McKinnis is a qualified contractor and a responsible bidder. McKinnis is the lowest bid by a hundred thousand dollars. The only difference is that McKinnis did not warrant on its bid form that we currently possess materials that had not been specified or special ordered. Contrary to the notes contained in the meeting minutes, McKinnis has materials necessary to complete the Central High, and there is no evidence to support the claim that materials will not be available until November of twenty-two, resulting in the project being delayed until twenty-three. McKinnis has confirmed material availability and will be available to complete the projects within the contractual time period, and if we don't, we are on the hook for five hundred dollars per day liquidated damages. If McKinnis is not selected, then McKinnis and the taxpayers are being punished to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars because McKinnis chose to be honest about its bid. This hundred thousand dollars could be better spent on several other projects. I would like to share with you an anecdote with John Neal just before the bid opening for this project. I will paraphrase to the best of my ability. John shared that he was aware of the municipalities in other areas of the country who had expressed to him their frustration in finding reputable, qualified contractors to bid on and perform work as needed. Often during the open bidding process, there would be no contractors attending submit bids or very few options to choose from, which resulted in cost overruns, project delays, inferior work. John went on to say how appreciative he was to operate in Omaha, where there's abundance of qualified, reputable, honest contractors who perform work on time, provide a high-quality product, and operate with integrity.
One minute.
I would agree with his sentiment and add to this condition exists because the open and transparent bidding process that is currently implemented by OPS and the decision today to choose the highest-priced contractor instead of the lowest responsible bidder can likely have the unintended consequences of creating the same situation John Neal stated that he was thankful to have avoided throughout his tenure at OPS. Ultimately, contractors may find the need to avoid offering bids to OPS if the process is deemed
Thirty seconds.
futile due to the unpredictable outcomes of awarding process. I implore you to do what is right and choose McKinnis for the work, and they clearly the lowest responsible bidder in this instance, and we at McKinnis stand ready to serve OPS to meet the needs of your district without delay as soon as the opportunity presents itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Robert Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Miller, that's R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R, and I reside at seventy-three oh-one North, one-hundred-and-seventh Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-two-two. Good evening, Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Logan, and members of the board. My name is Robert Miller, and I am the president of the Omaha Education Association. We've made it to May with a full academic of in-person learning. It's important that we recognize this accomplishment and the work and the dedication to our students that it took to achieve it. Critical to our success was the decision to set a safety protocols and to follow them. It has been challenging, but we stayed the course and delivered our instruction for our students. Because of our efforts, we spared the district from having to transition to full virtual teaching and learning. Our words matter. They can empower, support, encourage, make us rethink things, or tear individuals down. This room may not be filled with people right now, but I can safely say that people watch this board and what it says. In fact, OEA heard from many educators regarding this statement at the April fourth OPS board meeting. Remember that this is about our students. If you are an educator or anyone else in our district, and that is not your underlying goal, it might be time for you to find a new profession, plain and simple. That statement sent a powerful message. Educators have always put our students first, and we've continued to do so during the pandemic these past two years. It's been a significant challenge and became even more so when our suggested changes were not heard or acted upon. The OEA has offered the district many suggestions for improvement, and those suggestions come from educators, those working with students in the classroom daily, those who are directly affected by the decision this very board makes. While educators need and appreciate the district's responded to one concern with the adjustment of days, the days needed to be but were not fully at the discretion of the teacher. The adjustment in days was needed as the workload has increased exponentially due to educators taking on additional students and/or covering classes when a substitute cannot be found. Teachers are unable to get the needed work done during the day and must take it home to get the work completed. The district has instituted some changes to benefit some of the employees, but not all staff, such as increased summer school pay, student-teacher stipends or scholarships, and the offering of additional days. But when those additional non-student days are used by districts to require attendance or PD or meetings, it does not provide the help needed by our stretched-to-the-limit exhausted educators. I am at a loss to identify what help has been offered to those who've been in the field from the beginning of this year. Educators are needed now more than ever, but the number of teachers who have resigned from OPS and the number that has been hired so far, there is still a great deal of work to do. The mass exodus of teachers may have been expected, but not at the rate that this district is experiencing. While staff have resigned for numerous reasons, this district's actions and words do matter. Those who heard the "find a new profession" remark have taken the comment to heart and are wondering whether the district really does value them and their work, rather than finding a common ground to address the issues affecting our students, classroom, teachers, and staff. We are being told to find a new position. In a recent OEA survey, we asked members if they were valued by the district administration or building administration. When asked if district administration treats you as a professional, forty-eight percent said no. When asked if they felt valued as an employee by the district administration, sixty-eight percent said no. But when asked about their building administration, sixty-nine percent said the administration in their building treats them as a professional. And sixty-one said that they feel their building administration values them as an employee and a professional.
One minute.
So why are six-hundred-and-eighty-four OPS educators leaving the district? Ninety-nine of them are retiring, and five-hundred-and-eighty-five are likely headed to a different school district or a different job. I believe many are leaving because they feel unappreciated, not heard and not supported by the district. Having joy is one of our district's values, and sadly, it is something that is missing when referencing staff. Having unfilled positions will result in
Thirty seconds.
issues to solve. It continues to be a concern knowing that new buildings are opening, and we are already struggling to fill existing positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next night, we have Lydia Turner. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lydia, L-Y-D-I-A, Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R, one-four-seven-four-five Ruggel Street. Good evening. I stand before you today as a concerned parent, citizen, and professional who serves in multiple school districts in the Omaha metro area and a public servant of the community for nearly two decades. I would like to speak to you this evening about a variety of concerns that directly affect students within the Omaha Public School system. I hope to leave you with thought-provoking dialogue that leads to inclusive, sustainable changes to systematic problems that have plagued our city's educational system for many years. I could speak to you today about the food service, excuse me, the food served in the cafeteria around the district that my children refer to as prison food. I could tell you stories about school restrooms that don't contain hand soap during a global pandemic, or the restrooms that are closed within their building and they are not able to access them when they have to go, also during a global pandemic. I could tell you about the one-hundred-and-eight miles my family drives to get my seven schoolchildren to their building every single day, which is one-thousand, excuse me, two-thousand-one-hundred-sixty miles monthly, because they don't qualify for transportation, and the buses are so unreliable that they may pick them up at least one hour late every single day. Instead, I choose to talk to you today about the seven-hundred teachers that are potentially leaving the district, as well as disparities that students of color, especially those that live in poverty, face. I am a North Omaha native who has personally overcome struggles in poverty, racial disparities, and single parenthood. As a proud North High School graduate, class of two thousand and two, I have had the pleasure of my children walking in some of the same hallways that I walked in when I was their age. However, as much of this used to be joy to me, negative emotions fill me as a parent, and now I have grief. In this moment, I stand devastated, afraid, and anxious, in many ways I've never experienced before because of what next year could potentially look like for my children. I began this school year praying for my children so they wouldn't fall victim to learning gaps created by a system that often felt that they were failing them before the pandemic. My fears and anxieties have increased throughout the years, so in addition to driving the one-hundred-and-eight miles to get them to school each day, I also am afraid that if I don't get them there, they would have a county attorney referral. Now I worry that the problems will arise because over one-hundred, excuse me, of the hundreds of teachers that are scheduled to leave this district. It's become increasingly difficult to instill hope in the families I serve that have children that attend the OPS schools. It's become even more difficult to have hope and courage for myself as my children attend these same schools. One of my children is fearful to attend his school and walk through the metal detectors while drug-stimulated dogs roam his building because of drugs that are regularly brought into his school. I admire his resiliency and determination to attend a school where he feels many professionals look at him as a threat as he stands six foot tall as a black male who tends to wear hoodies everywhere he goes. He has been criminalized every day by the very people that are supposed to educate and invest in him. He's been suspended for minor issues such as arguing with a boy in the hallway that wanted to fight him during passing period when his response was, "This is stupid. I'm not going to fight you." He attends a district that has created policies directly connecting him to the school-to-prison pipeline and perpetuates the segregation of being the thirty-ninth of nineteen thousand counties in this country for most segregated. As we watch our white students leave the district, my heart aches for the black and brown children that are directly affected, especially those that live in poverty. My family, as many others, do not have the option to leave this district. Transitioning my soon-to-be senior next year as my other six children, it would mean that I would be disrupting their norm and moving them to unknown places where they have no guarantee that they would even be successful. As if the lack of representation of people of color serving in the school isn't enough, now we're anticipating over seven-hundred teachers that will be leaving after this school year. It feels like our students are being discarded and pushed away, like the movie Lean on Me. I ask, where are the millions of dollars of ESRA funds that were supposed to be addressing the issues that were directly related to COVID? Where is the money going to hire, train, and supply our professionals with much-needed education so they can educate our youth? and supply our professionals with much-needed education so they can educate our youth? This is deeper than an OPS problem. How will OPS, as a district, work with the mayor, city council members, senator, governor, other government
Thirty seconds.
officials, and community providers? What would the initiatives be that save our children's lives? Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Steve Denenberg. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Denenberg, S-D-E-V-E-D-E-N-E-N-B-E-R-G. I live at six five six North Fifty-Sixth Street. I love Central High School. My dad, a junior at Central when Pearl Harbor was bombed, tried to enlist in the Navy, but his mom made him graduate first. His seven siblings also graduated from Central. My mother told me that since Central is up on a hill, on hot summer nights, people from all over the city came with their blankets to sleep on Central's yards, outside in the nighttime breezes, blanket to blanket, covering every blade of grass. My mom was an active Central evangelist for seventy-five years. Ask any of the ex-principals. I've been an evangelist for half a century. We used to say my mom was always either at a central function or planning a central function. My wife, a Westside grad, said we were, quote, "ego-central." My brother got a great education at Central, went to Harvard University, stayed for a PhD in mathematics. I followed Larry to Harvard and got a degree in physics. We loved and respected our Central teachers. Whenever Larry came to town, we'd visit our Central High Math teacher, Virginia Lee Pratt. We did that until she died at the age of ninety-six. I sang in Central's a cappella choir. My mother did too. And seventy-eight years later, my oldest son Danny, who graduated last spring, sang in a cappella as well. Central is in my blood. Well, now we have a crisis at Central and throughout the district. You were presented with various emergencies and found yourselves utterly inadequate to the demands. The main emergency? Your superintendent is episodically duplicitous and unethical, and clearly is not up to the task of helping a troubled district. But you didn't recognize that emergency and take charge. Most of you just did her bidding. But even those of you with independent thought took no action commensurate to the urgency of the district's rapid demise. Instead of taking strong action to help the students whose behavior deteriorated alarmingly during the pandemic, you wasted a year and tens of millions of dollars forcing the teachers to prepare pathways, the superintendent's bizarre and useless program. Instead of leaping to identify and help the students who are desperately behind academically, you pushed them further behind by forcing Central to implement the ridiculous block scheduling. You ignored the teachers when they came here to plead for help. You made their lives miserable. And now Central is losing forty teachers. Forty teachers. Look what you did to my school. And don't you dare insinuate again that those who complain or resign don't love teaching enough. Nauseating. We're here. We are at the disaster that the district's teachers have been predicting all year, and it is not being addressed, no matter what mollifying verbiage comes out of the administration's Public Relations Department and the board meetings. Central desperately needs help, as does the entire district, but you have demonstrated beyond doubt that this board cannot provide that help. So you must all resign your positions on this board
One minute.
without delay. This week, you showed no leadership as you allowed Superintendent Logan to run her academic experiments on the district, and look where it's gotten us. Enough. It is time to act with integrity. Resign. Give us a fighting chance by getting out of the way. Thank you.
Next, we have Michaela Kazer.
Hello, my name is Michaela Kazer, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R, and my address is one one six one nine Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one six four. And I am here today to speak on the C three curriculum that the OPS school system has in place. I want to begin first by letting everyone know who I am so that no one listening to me or anyone on this board misinterprets who I am and what I stand for. I'm a seventeen-year-old, God-fearing, Bible-loving Christian that is disgusted by what I see is being taught to my generation and the generations that will follow. I attend an extremely diverse church in Omaha, Nebraska, where there are just as many people of dark skin as there are people with white skin. And I even have a youth leader who has dark skin, and I call her my aunt, and I have a pastor with dark skin, and I consider him a second father to me. Although I do recognize skin colors and different ethnicities, I do not consider that when I look at someone or if I consider if I will talk to them. I look at everyone how God made them to be in the image of God, as Genesis one twenty-seven states. So God created man in his own image. He created him. Male and female, he created him. So just because when you look at me, you see a white girl standing here, please know that I have a whole church filled with people from all around the world who stand with me also. To begin, I will describe what exactly the C three curriculum is. When you go to the website named C three Teachers, that website describes what the C three curriculum is and the three main objectives it has. A enhances the vigor of the social studies disciplines. B build critical thinking, problem-solving, and participatory skills to become engaged citizens. C align academic programs to the common core state standards for English, language arts, and literacy in history slash social studies. While building these concepts at first glance sound like a good thing, when researching what is actually being taught to the students, this curriculum isn't teaching our students how to think, but what to think. On the Nebraska Department of Education website concerning C three, a link called C three Teachers was posted there. So I went to that link so I could learn more about what C three actually is. On this C three website, there is a great emphasis on describing what inquiry-based learning is. And while at first glance that may seem good, I came across a blog they posted that was extremely eye-opening. The blog stated some of the major goals were to address history told from the multiple perspectives and told through a culturally responsive lens. We don't use that word lightly in the district. It has deep meaning, deep-rooted meaning to it, and it goes beyond race. We were looking for a comprehensive survey of modern American history from reconstruction to present to, in which we could highlight the hard history. That term "hard history" was coined by teaching tolerance, and we thought, how could that philosophy, how could we teach that philosophy, that ideology, and really apply to the inquiry design model? I then went to the Teaching Tolerance website, which is now renamed to Learning for Justice, and this organization describes itself as, "Learning for Justice seeks to uphold the mission of the Southern Poverty Law Center, to be a catalyst for racial justice in the South and beyond. Working in partnership with communities to dismantle white supremacy, strengthen intersectional movements, and advance the human rights of all people. We support this mission by focusing our work with educators, students, caregivers, and communities in these areas: culture and climate, curriculum and instruction, leadership, family, and community engagement." One of the lesson plans that are stated for teachers to use is called Exploring Diversity Through Oral History, and the essential questions in the lesson plan are, "What groups do I belong to? What are my identities? How do I know I'm part of a group? How do I see myself? Is that the way others see me?"
One minute.
"What identities do I share with my family? What identities do I have that are different from my family?" This teaches the children to focus on their outside characteristics and to look, and to look at others based on outside characteristics. Isn't that the opposite of equality? Isn't that the opposite of eliminating racism? OPS has already attempted to implement C three curriculum according to a video labeled Omaha Public Schools Equity and Diversity, number C three
Thirty seconds.
webinar one, Access and Opportunity, which can be found on YouTube, and I watched it, and most of it was concerning equity. From November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, parents, is this what you want your children to be taught? OPS is teaching our students to look at themselves and others based on race rather than on how God created them to be. This will result in nothing other than students hating themselves and each other. I know that because when the riots broke out in two thousand and twenty, I said to my mom, if I succeed in life
That's time.
Next, we have Larry Storer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Larry Storer, S-T-O-R-E-R, first name is L-A-R-R-Y, represent myself and taxpayers. What a wonderful evening to have a lesson
Would you share your address, please, Mr. Storer?
I'm sorry?
Your address.
Five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, six eight one three two. What a wonderful opportunity you had here tonight to keep the students to go to these schools, right here in River City, in this meeting, and maybe listen, try to listen, and then debate your performance. Civics, don't we teach civics? This would be a good civics lesson. First of all, let me point out a couple of things that I think are wrong with your meetings and probably a violation of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. First of all, your sound system is pretty poor. One of the reasonable things, they talked about reasonable rules, is reasonable opportunity to hear, which basically means understanding. The students could debate that, couldn't they? Is this a good system? Does it sound the same to everybody in the room? It sounds like echoes? Can you understand people that have masks on? Students could debate that. But is that a two-way discussion? Debates usually are. Discussions, that's debatable. That's the second item. Your rules and your agendas are so different than everybody else's that I don't see anything very reasonable about this. It does give the citizens an opportunity to speak. Five minutes is probably better than some, but there is no other opportunity that's a clear opportunity on this worthless piece of paper that lets a student or a citizen anywhere talk about the policy that you are maybe deciding tonight. That is, again, a violation of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. Your agendas are not reasonably understandable. Do you expect people to get a dictionary out here tonight or to spend hours deciphering your words on all of those items as to what it means? You're supposed to be able to reasonably understand the discussion of these items, but it's not just a discussion. There's supposed to be an input from the citizens. Nowhere on this worthless piece of paper or in your rules that I looked up does it say that I can speak on any item anywhere other than on public comments. And you might decide you don't want public comments tonight. So it's worthless. Violation of Open Meetings Act. And now I tore up my notes, so I'm going to have to just shoot. The Douglas County Board, for example, is maybe the upper chamber of a tri-part system, a Republican-type of government. The mayor is down at the bottom, maybe, or the executive. Then you have the lower chamber, which is the city council. They're the rabble. They're the power of the people, the democracy thing. And the Douglas County Board is more like the Senate. They're supposed to be older and wiser, more experienced to quell the passions of the people. So they have a little bit better rules than any of the rest of the bodies in this area, including the Learning Community Council. They're about as bad, if not worse, than you guys are, because they interrupt people. They shut people up, but they let other people ramble on and ramble on and ramble on. It could be off-topic. Sometimes at the city council
One minute.
if I'm slightly off-topic, I'm ruled out of order and sent out, but other people get to get off-topic as much as they damn well please. That's unreasonable. But we don't have a chance to see that here, and your students still have a chance to learn civic engagement until they go to the university out there on Dodge Street, the College of Civic and Civil Engagement. And they learn how to be rabble-rousers, worse than I am.
Thirty seconds.
But they're allowed to do it. They get by with it. Now, last week, real quickly, their body language and actions were more threatening than mine. On consent agendas, if you pull it out, it becomes a hearing, but if you don't pull it out, you are supposed to give a citizens an opportunity to bring something up. That's one of the rules. Read it. And you don't do that. You chose to walk
That's time.
Thank you. Moving on now to consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Ms. Juarez. I will be abstaining tonight. President Holman, I will also be abstaining from I twelfth, along with you.
Perfect. That's Claim Report C. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Excuse me, motion carries. Moving on now to action items. Item J one A, approval of first reading of policies fifty-four oh three, fifty-four oh four, fifty-four oh five, fifty-four oh six, and fifty-four oh seven. Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. These are the same policies that we had as an information item at the last meeting. There have been no changes, so I would make a motion to approve these policies on first reading.
Second.
We don't need a second, actually, for that one. So, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item J two A, Bond Program Update, and tonight we have Mr. Wakefield and Mr. Summers here.
Madam President, I haven't seen Mark Summers in a while. Welcome back.
Glad to be here. As always, thank you, Matt. Very appreciate it. As Mr. Snow mentioned, it's been, really, frankly, a couple of years for me to be able to provide an update on the bond program. So for those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Mark Summer. I'm with Jacobs. We're working with Omaha Public Schools, of course, on the bond referendum. We helped in the two thousand and fourteen, and, of course, in the two thousand and eighteen. So I'm just part of Mr. Wakefield's team. Also tonight is Brad. He's the Omaha Public Schools Bond Supervisor. So please, any questions, we'll just, we'll shuffle that way, of course. And then Ayana's working with us on all of the student engagement and small business inclusion work. So we have a kind of a broad presentation today from a program perspective. Dr. Logan and a couple other folks had kind of underscored some of the major events that have happened over the past really thirty days related to not only the two high schools that are going to be opening up in August, but, of course, the two elementary schools. So just kind of want to give everybody a little bit of perspective of where we're at. So, of course, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three is really the entire timeline for the referendum. So September of twenty-three is really when all the projects will be finished up. All of the grayed-out areas really is just to show you what's been accomplished. So you can see from a kind of a mass and a scale perspective a lot. Over the next couple of months, we'll be working hard on some summer projects, and we'll talk just briefly about those here shortly. But really, after this summer, there's only three projects that will remain. And so the referendum is really kind of in the kind of downhill slide, if you will, from an overall completion perspective. Transitioning from a financial perspective, the top bar crossed here is really the four hundred and twelve million dollar budget. And then this graph is really just representing all of the commitments that the board has approved, whether that's a purchase order or contract over the last roughly four years. And at this point in time, there's about four hundred million dollars And at this point in time, there's about $400 million, or roughly 98% of the $412 million total referendum that has been committed. There are a couple of amendments over the next couple of months that will be coming back to the board for your approval to ultimately commit the balance of those funds. And then the bottom graph is really the inverse of that. That's the expenditure side. So again, we appreciate all the approvals on the contracts and then on the invoicing side. And those will always follow in suit. So right here, you can see kind of the mark of current time. That's about $368 million, I believe. Those are all the bills that have been paid, again, whether that's against a purchase order or a contract, et cetera. So what we like to look for is just a really smooth, and Scott can talk about this probably the rest of the night, but just a nice, smooth F-S curve from a cash flow perspective. Of course, we worked with his team on forecasting that so the district is selling bond tranches appropriately to continue to fund projects to keep them moving forward. Just transitioning into some of the inclusion work. Again, it's a $412 million overall referendum. Almost $400 million of that has been committed. And in the 2018 program, $40 million of that was committed to small businesses, with about $32 million of that being spent. From a student engagement perspective, we've had a good opportunity to work with kiddos on really a bunch of different levels to provide them some glimpses into not only a STEM perspective from a technical engineering, whether it's mechanical, electrical. They've had lots of opportunity to interact with professionals in that business, tour different design studios. They've been able to go into kind of the boiler rooms of their buildings to really see how piping configurations work, what some of the larger equipment is. And then also kind of on the steam or the art side of it, we're working with some students that are putting together some tiles that will ultimately go up in Buena Vista High School and other finish-related work. Program milestones, again, you can kind of see we've broken into the sin to short, mid, and long. So just from the top down, the athletic packages. Back in December, the board approved the use of some bond savings for the athletic packages. So I believe tonight, one is on the agenda for approval, and we appreciate that. And then one will be coming forward in June. Substantial completion for Blackburn is also scheduled in the month of June of '22. The dedications have been mentioned, so I won't repeat those. From a YMCA perspective, this month of May, the YMCA equipment FFNE, so all of the cardio equipment, all the weight equipment, et cetera, will be moved into those locations. June, they'll be doing some tours really of both campuses where they have their Y footprint. And then in July, they'll be planning on opening up. From a midterm perspective, that's 60 to 120 days. Here's a couple of milestones. Definitely don't need to read them all, but just so you're aware, again, there's going to be lots of summer activities. And on the next snapshot slide, we'll talk about those a little bit further. And then a little bit longer term, that's 120 days kind of out. Spring Lake substantial completion, which is really about a year from now. And then, of course, Blue Stem Middle School, which was one of the last new construction projects, again, about a year from now. From an active projects perspective, Dr. Logan had mentioned it earlier. There's 25 in the Phase 2 program. 10 of them are totally complete, so they're not on this snapshot today. Of really all the active projects, green, of course, is good. Yellow is just things that we kind of bring awareness to when we have kind of our weekly discussions with Mr. Wakefield, just to make sure that everybody's really aligned and what's happening from a project-level perspective. So just from a yellows perspective, the Spring Lake has a yellow under schedule. That has to do with some unforeseen asbestos abatement that was discovered during the renovation project. So we work with OPS Environmental, get that remediated, get the project moving again. I will say, none of these yellows are really affecting any completion dates of the work or really any cost. It's really more about coordinating the items that occur. Central High School, North High School, South High School, and Blackburn really have to do with this summer's amount of work. And it was mentioned that by Dr. Logan again, where South High School, there's still a tremendous amount of mechanical work occurring, so they're not going to have summer school at that campus to allow that work to happen. Extremely grateful for that. The more space we can provide to the builders and the contractors to kind of freely renovate space, the better from a timeline and an economics perspective. So good news there. And then the last yellow, Westview, is underneath the budget perspective. And that's really because we're working through the athletic package pricing on that project. And once that's complete, we'll bring that back to the board for approval. Again, as we kind of are continuing to work through the balance of the bond, just a couple of key things that we wanted to try to point out. One, of course, was the programs on time and well within, or within the budget. This is specifically, we think it's a great thing because during the pandemic, supply chain has been extremely unpredictable. And to be honest, in our conversations, not only kind of in the metro or Nebraska area, but even broader, this program really kind of thread the needle from that perspective. We have had some cost escalation of materials and stuff that are, I would say, fairly normal. All things, though, that we've been able to count for within budget. Nothing has gone beyond that. The $10 million of additional work, I kind of had mentioned. The board approved some use of savings for the athletics package. That was back in December. Back in May, there was some approval of some bond savings for the infill of the auditorium at Morton for some additional classrooms, which will ultimately allow all 13 portables at Morton to go away. And then the third approval that the board gave on some bond savings was to add some bid alternates to the Spring Lake campus. So that really accounts for that $10 million of additional work that we've been able to add in. In August, there's going to be about 700,000 square foot of new school space turned over for district use. Of course, you guys have all been talking about students and staff in the community, so those three will be greatly affected by this. The $87 million committed to small and emerging businesses, really, that's the 2014 and the 2018 program combined. Super proud of not only the work that's been done from a financial perspective, but just the broader lift that we've been able to provide to the small and emerging businesses. And then, of course, lots of modernization of mechanical, electrical, and safety systems along the way. Not everything in the second referendum was just brand-new constructions. Lots of infrastructure and other systems that are being updated. So that's really what we had for you today. There is an appendix for all of you board members to look from. Every project has an update inside of that. And we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Summer and the rest of the team for being here for the presentation tonight. We know Mr. Snow has questions.
I always have questions. It's the only time I really get to talk to people, so. I believe we cut our portables in half with the first and second bond, which is amazing because there was a time we had over 200-plus portables. And we know that's a challenge for a lot of teachers. South's not going to have summer school, is that correct? This might be a little off-topic. Are they still going to have the summer musical?
Summer school at Buena Vista?
Yeah. South is going to have a summer school, just not at South High Campus. We relocated students to Buena Vista.
So the summer school musical, is it going to happen at South or somewhere else?
It's going to happen at, I believe, at Buena Vista. It's not going to happen at South.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's a beautiful summer program. I know in the past, we talked about a maintenance system, so we're not coming back to the taxpayers with $1.3 billion on, you know, deferred maintenance. Is there a system in place? Because I know in the beginning, we talked, when the rugs or the carpet goes in, we know it's a 10-year cycle. Have we started? I'm just a little off on it. Thank you, Mr. Wakefield.
The board approved a facility study last August. Please don't quote me on that date. That is outlining kind of a priority list for us as deferred maintenance, maintenance, and preventive maintenance. As a district, we're trying to move into more of a preventative-predictive maintenance cycle and less of a reactive maintenance cycle so that we're planning ahead as we work with our buildings.
So would there be like some information sent to board members? I don't know. I just think it's very neat because then, as board members and superintendent, we can look 20 years down the road on if we need to go back to the taxpayers for additional bonds?
Part of the facility study is a final report coming out of the organization doing that in December that we will share with the board.
Already had. And I love the SCB, SB, Small Business Emerging Businesses work. It was kind of tough because we were the first in the entire state doing it. And you have all gone above and beyond, even with me screaming and kicking. So I thank you so much. And I forgot to mention this, to thank Dr. Logan for coming to Omaha Public Schools when she was tasked to open up two high schools. So thank you so much for your hard work and your leadership on that. I know you don't get enough praise, that you should. And I just want to let you know, you're amazing.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you. You know, this is one bullet on a slide, but I really don't want it to get lost here. On time and within budget during the pandemic, can you speak a little bit more as to how exactly that happened?
Just some grit, honestly. And just taking each day, from an overall management perspective, we do have some contingencies, if you will. But I got to be honest, this is really a much bigger partnership than any of us, essentially. There's lots of contractors and subcontractors and designers and subconsultants from a design perspective. And I just think as a collective, good decisions were made along the way. We were able to work with the district where we did need to look at different materials because of cost or timeline, but without sacrificing ultimately the quality. At Blue Stem Middle School, there was an issue getting roofing insulation at a certain period of time. And so we worked with everybody and said, okay, we can't get that one, but we can get the same R-value with a different product. So let's make sure it works with, from a maintenance perspective, long-term. We're not going to shorten the life. You know, and so there's just kind of that grind through, from a product data perspective. And yeah, ultimately, that's a good product. We can still get it at the same cost. We don't have to pay that escalator rate. So lots of that kind of day-to-day kind of evaluation. The other thing is, is keeping things on time, which is really the most valuable thing. So the more work we get in place and the more dollars that are expended, the less risk there is to the program and to the budget. So there's, you know, you kind of hear, there's no better time than now. And so keeping all of the projects starting on time, working with the occupied schools and making sure phases can start when they need to, material procurement is there. All of those things really are probably the largest financial benefit of not kind of delaying projects and dragging them out. And then that cost escalation is really, really difficult to mitigate because it just, it gets kind of unruly because you're trying to accelerate and recover the time and the cost. So I think, again, partnering with everybody and then just keeping things on time are probably the two biggest attributes to keeping it within the budget.
There were some things that were done in terms of the monthly meetings that we had with Jacobs that were really helpful, where we went through, in addition to the regular meetings with the CBAC committee and with the team, where we were able to, you know, work at a high level with folks from all different levels of Jacobs to ensure that we were staying on budget. I will say that I have to give credit, a lot of credit to Darwin Rhodey. When we were having our first meetings about the pandemic in February of 2020 and talking about what we would do, his advice to the district was to keep moving and to not delay anything. We had a lot of questions about that because we weren't thinking that we were going to be able to do that. And he pushed us. And so we have to give him a lot of credit for working alongside of Jacobs, but also pushing, as one of our employees, pushing the district to keep moving. Even, I mean, we were still heavily building even when, because some construction sites weren't shut down. So we were able to keep building in March and April and May of 2020 and all throughout that summer. So some of those things, in addition to really excellent coordination with our finance department in terms of the timing of the tranches to ensure the best premiums and other things like that. So it was a lot of teamwork and coordination that went into that. It didn't happen by happenstance. We'll say that.
Vice President Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Holman. A couple editorial comments. First, I don't know how I missed the timing on this, but you're saying that Dr. Logan agreed to come be our superintendent after we already had this in place?
She knew we were going to be opening up two new high schools when she got here.
Well, thank you.
It was a daunting task.
Well, okay. Nicely done. Thank you, Dr. Logan.
Because the bond passed in May, and I believe Dr. Logan started in June. So there was a little small transition as the former superintendent. We were doing all that, and then we're like, all right, Dr. Logan.
Here.
It's a team effort. I mean, I appreciate the shout-out, but it's a team effort. The team makes sure a lot of things keep going. And I have to give the credit to all of the people that, from Dr. Turnquist and, well, here from time to time. Dr. Turnquist, Dr. Sturba, Mr. Rhodey, Jeremy Cobb, those folks, Brad Boganski, Charles Wakefield. Of course, Mark Summer has been the constant throughout all of this. And his team, Mark Christman, gosh, I'm forgetting, Bill Vandenberg, Ishmael Khalif, the entire team has been really wonderful to work with. So I really appreciate. It does make a difference to have a professional project management team who has a, they have a window into how things are going other places than here and can give us a lot of feedback. That, I would say, that was really key for the Omaha Public Schools. Having Jacobs Engineering, which is the largest firm in the world, as our partner, was really tremendous. And even when it came down to things that are associated with the bond, so the Student Assignment Plan and the boundaries. So we, there was a consultant that was hired who came in and did the eight boundary meetings that we did around the district with us, a professional who was used to doing them around the country and kind of could anticipate some things, in concert with our wonderful team of our research team, Casey Hughes and Annie McFarland especially, to do those kinds of things. Because it's not just the buildings, it's putting the kids in them. And it's not easy. People are, it's hard for people to leave their school. But we did produce some beautiful facilities for those kids to, and the community, to transition to, so.
My second editorial comment, before I get to my questions, is just hold on to your stomachs. They will come up into your throat. But I at least have received a couple of emails from constituents suggesting that we delay the opening of these schools. And so I just let you know, we're holding the line. As far as I know, non-starter to the max. But when I sit here and I realize how much has been accomplished and how beautiful they are and how wonderful they are, the notion of someone suggesting we delay them is inconceivable, she said, quoting one of her favorite movies. Okay. I just, on the schedule that you had there, Buena Vista and Westview, they're athletic, the changes we approved on for the athletics, it said they will be completed, they're scheduled to be completed in December of '22, is that right? I've lost track of how usable those facilities are before those changes are made. Will we be able to use those fields pending bleachers and some of the other things we decided to add?
So the athletic packages on the exterior fields, so the football field, baseball fields, et cetera, most of those will not be usable during that time period. We are prepping them for spring semester sports as we go forward.
Okay, great. I just couldn't remember how that ended up. The other question I had was about the small and business, emerging businesses. When we've looked at it before, and I've seen a list of what kinds of things are being contracted off to the small and emerging businesses, they have seemed to be, in more cases than I would have liked, relatively low-skill. Have we seen a higher skill? And forgive me, they seem to be like construction cleanup kind of jobs. Has that changed over the course of the last couple, three or four years?
Yeah, and we can kind of update that listing. Absolutely. There's concrete placement, there's drywall finishers, there's painters. You know, one area that's a little bit more difficult are kind of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing arenas. But really, all the other kind of business lines in construction, we have small business participation.
Great. Good to know. Thank you very much.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. I remember when we had the discussions about the SCBs of a lot of them just trying to get that certification and keep that staff because they would do one project and then not have another project for a couple months. Mr. Jacobs, I remember a time when we talked, I mean, sorry, Mr. Summers, oh, man. You are Jacobs.
I was looking for him.
Yeah. I believe that individual met Dr. Logan. All right, so I remember a time when we were doing the 2018 bond, the campaign and preparing for it. I believe Jacobs or some of the construction companies were advised to start buying up extra steel and other things like that to be, because it was going to be a lower cost than buying it a couple years later. Do you remember that? Do you remember that?
We, we, I, I do not, but we did not do any, we didn't need to do any bulk procurement. You know, that's always an option, but that's not something we had to employ here.
Okay. Because I swear, I thought, but understand. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you all so much for being here tonight. We appreciate the update. Okay, moving on now to receipt a report. We have one reporter on the agenda this evening, item K1, CBOC update for Phase 2 bond programs, April 2022. Moving on now to closed session, Vice President Erdenberger?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, real estate negotiations and legal advice.
I have a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Vice President Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, whose voice is that? Oh, thank you. A Mr., a second by Mr. Snow, roll call please.
Crackey. Smith. Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of a closed session at 9:02 PM. Meeting adjourned.